Um, I don't know, three, two?
Nicole, I just gotta do a check for you guys tonight, too.
Did you?
Yeah, I got rid of the old one that bangs.
Nice. I know where to find if I need more, right?
Yeah. Right, Nicole?
I hope so.
Now, you guys should be good to go.
President, please, Mr. President, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. First thing we have to get through is some meeting minutes. Uh, the first one's from our number fourteen. Two thousand sixteen public hearing minutes. If there's any additions or corrections, do you know which motion has been approved?
I'm making a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Mary. All those in favor, please second by this lady. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. November fourteen, two thousand sixteen, that was our regularly scheduled council meeting minutes. If there isn't any additions or corrections there, will you motion have those approved?
I would approve the motion, please, from the...
Motion on the floor by Mary.
I'll second that.
Second by Don. All those in favor, please seconded by this lady. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening?
Do not have any additions.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Anybody else have anything? If not, we will need a motion to approve the agenda.
How many? I make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Mike and seconded by Donnie. All those in favor, please seconded by this lady. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'd like to second.
Can't be unanimous, please.
I should just let you two name it. You guys are going away eventually. I'll let you get your name on official city minutes more.
Uh, first item we have on the agenda this evening is an application for on-sale license to bar and restaurant. Andrew Maher. And Andrew, is that gonna remain Patrick's?
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be Patrick's Bar and Grill.
Come on up front.
Yeah.
While on the camera, say your D's.
Yeah, come on up. You can bring a chair. Certainly come up if you'd like.
There's a condition on liquor license? I'm just kidding.
Andrew, how's it going?
Good.
Good. And looks like you guys have got everything, um, pretty well finalized?
Yep. Yep, as far as, you know, the, the business part goes, um, that's court from the LLC have all been filed appropriately, which Nicole has all that information. Um, the insurance, I know she has proof of the limited liability that's required. Um, work comp, all that stuff will be here in the next day or two. But, um, yeah, it's gonna remain Patrick's Bar and Grill and, um, you know, as far as all that other stuff should be, should be on the... What process do we have to go through here?
Well, she's gonna need approval for a liquor license.
He's been pretty thorough with all of his application and stuff, so.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Nicole's been awesome, too, by the way, with helping me have the issue there. It's my first time.
It's my first time. We're working together.
Yeah, she's, she's been a good help, so.
Here's kind of the, one of the dilemmas I see. I mean, we're looking for a liquor license renewal, um, for all the bars. Um, I think that comes due annually. Yeah, what is it, January or February?
The end of June.
Is it, is it that late?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The question is, do we wanna try and charge him full price and then make him again in June?
No.
Can't we prorate it?
We should prorate it.
We can't prorate it, correct?
I think we can.
Oh, I would, yeah.
Right.
So how do we do that chatter? Have you paid for the year?
No. Um, well, this is a completely different one, so it can transfer.
Okay, so.
It's treated as new. Oh, really?
Yeah.
You gotta let the guy get started. We can't, we can't sock the... Sock it to him right away.
We tell you what, you go and handle it.
Well, we appreciate that very much. That's a, it's a big help.
It's a big, yeah, it's a help.
Yeah. Well, I would make a motion that we approve the on-sale license transfer to, uh, Andrew for Patrick's at a prorative cost.
Motion on the floor by Mike and seconded by Mary. All those in favor, please seconded by this lady. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
So what's, so one question I have then is, this is for on sale?
It's for all of them.
On and on.
Yeah, but this is for the liquor license application. So once we approve this, we will send it to the state and we'll go forward with that.
With the on sale?
Yep.
Okay. Wanna make sure we have them covered, 'cause I, I don't, Patrick's still in the front corner there with what we have listed here. It's only on sale. It's a lot of on sale. Okay.
Yep.
That's better.
And we are changing the ordinance tonight back to one o'clock closing.
Yep, and, uh, as we kinda had a conversation earlier, that is a hundred percent okay with us. We were not interested in getting a two-way-on license anyways, so that's...
All right.
Yep.
So it's not a surprise.
Nope, nope.
All right, good.
Okay, well, good luck.
Okay. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course.
Uh, we have next on the agenda is chapter nine ordinance amendment discussion, and that is chapter nine, our two-way-on license. I know at the last meeting, we had discussion about, uh, drafting and ordinance and trying to get that approved. I know Nicole had mentioned at the last meeting, technically, did not have to have a public hearing. I think that it's still a wise idea anytime the city changes its ordinances, that we do go through a public hearing, so we get feedback from the public. I think that's very important. How do you guys feel about having a public hearing?
We do have one set for the twelfth for the truth in taxation, so we can have it on. Sure.
Was that enough time for the notification?
I can, I can send it out tomorrow.
I, I don't think it'd be a long one either, but I, I agree that I think, you know...
Any changes should be back to the...
Yeah.
It's, it's always nice to get feedback from the public.
Getting public input is good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good idea.
Okay, so we'll schedule that meeting then for the twelfth at...
We do six thirty. That's the time the truth in taxation is at.
We're gonna go back to six o'clock.
We do six forty-five if you want it or...
Yeah, six forty-five is probably fine.
Fifteen minutes, pretty sure. I agree with mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion on that, Patrick. Um, we shouldn't need one. Next item on your agenda is, uh, our tobacco-free park policy, and we are gonna have a presentation from Negan Cummings. She's the public health. Negan, hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
So thank you for having us. I have a whole crew with me today. So, these gentlemen are with the Epic Student Group from the high school, the encouraging positive influence from choices. Um, they've all taken the pledge to be drug alcohol tobacco-free, so they represent, right now, about forty percent of the schools in that group as well. So there are a couple of them that have offered to so finally come to share the nation. I'll pass these around. They're just, um, not to overwhelm, but more just bits and pieces for afterwards if you wanna look through some more models and whatnot for actual policies. Um, we're hoping tonight just to kinda get the thought on the table and educate a little bit more about, um, the benefits of tobacco-free parks and policies. So with that being said, um, why are policies effective? In part, policies reinforce the youth, the message that tobacco use is unhealthy and unnecessary behavior. It also ensures that participants and spectators are not exposed to secondhand smoke. So that's more so where this is touching base, is secondhand smoke, not trying to violate anybody's rights to actually smoke, but just ensuring safety of secondhand, um, others away from secondhand smoke. Um, and to create an environment where leaders can model more healthy lifestyle choices. In part, why we ask it to be citywide, um, would be to branch off of our school that is tobacco-free as well. And I know many of the events are held also at the city park. They do the outings and the field trips and cross-country meets. Um, to be more consistent and cohesive around town would be greatly appreciated. And just creating those smoke-free environments protects the health and safety of the welfare of the community. Um, I think we're all, you know, aware that it is the number one preventative cause for deaths right now in the U.S. is smoking, so secondhand smoke goes with that. More and more studies are coming out showing that there is evidence to outdoor secondhand smoke as well. It's not just indoor-based. So with that, I also have Ms. Katie Bozer here tonight, and she has provided a letter of support, so I will let her share that, her thoughts as well.
Um, I could, I could...
Summarize or read it for...
I could read it, too, um, but I think for the most part, most of you know me. Um, you've either seen me and my little son tramping around the community, or, um, you know, you know my husband, Darren. Um, but the reason why I first brought it up was because I traveled to Caledonia, Minnesota, and they have this policy, um, or actually it's going into effect. Um, and I thought, wow, this is pretty, to me, it made common sense, um, not to complicate things, not to, um, be sick in the mud or whatnot, but it just made sense to me. And I guess the reason why, I have an example in here. Um, my husband and I went to Pierce Park one time this summer, um, just with our kids. We wanted to go swimming. My son loves to go swimming down there. And at that time, my daughter was four months old, um, and there was a group there, and they were all sitting kind of, you know, in a circle, and a number of them were smoking, which, you know, my husband and I, we moved to the other side, you know, no big deal. Um, I went to go nurse my daughter, and, um, I was, you know, sitting kind of far off, and the sun had moved, and so the shade had went over these people. And they decided, well, then they're going to get up and they're going to move closer to us. And it's like, it's situations like that where I wish that I could just point to the sign and say, you know, this is a smoke-free area, if, you know, could you please just move to a parking lot nearby or some other place so that my family can enjoy this park area? My husband and I are pretty healthy people, um, health-conscious, and, um, he's a pharmacist, you know, and, um, we, we want to be able to raise our kids in an environment that's healthy. That's why we moved to Pierce. You know, we want them to be in a rural community, um, and, and just raise them right. And I think that this policy is one that makes common sense. It's, it's the right thing to do.
Uh, so touching on and expanding on that, the environmental effect that it actually has, too. Alex Gross will read a little bit on that, and I'll take the pictures and share it with the council. Here's just some pictures, um, taken earlier this morning, which the rain worked my favor, 'cause you can actually see a little, but, um, you know, big picture, really, our city does amazing. Our maintenance crew at keeping it clean and looking very good. Uh, there were still, as you can see, a few cigarette butts here and there, on the playground, in the playground, at the American Legion Park. Um, so it, it is happening, and it is where children play. So go ahead, Alex, read yours.
Discarded cigarette butts are non-biodegradable form of litter that can take decades to break down. Several trillion of discarded cigarette butts litter the sidewalks, bench cleanup benches, and other outdoor areas each year, and are the single most collected item in international bench cleanups. Cigarette and other tobacco product litter is unattractive, expensive to clean up, and invite environmental, light, harmful to other ways, wildlife. This waste can also affect the health of humans when, for example, children pick up on and consume used cigarette butts, and when chemicals produced from light cigarette butts from the storm drains, groundwater, recreational bodies of water, and other environmental threats. Discarded cigarettes are also a significant, significant cause of outdoor fires, accounting for hundreds or millions of dollars annual costs and environmental damage, personal property losses, fire, fighting expenses, and restoration efforts.
Thank you. And so with a policy in place, what we would be proposing or suggesting that is shown to be effective in other communities is simply, um, self-regulating. You know, they're voluntarily doing this. We're not talking, um, fines of any sort. It would be really communicating and reaching out via signage. Um, and one of the great things about, um, the tobacco-free communities grant that we have for Morrison, Todd, and what, Minnesota Cummings, um, if there is a written policy that covers all even e-cigarettes, um, we would supply the signage for you, and you can get up to five signs per property. So if you have five parks, you could get twenty-five signs, um, to display as well. Um, and having talked with Eric Henneken and making sure we're all, you know, on the same page in his thoughts on how that would happen, it would be simply, you know, if you're there, they re-sign most. Look for signs these days to see, is it okay to smoke here, is it not? Um, but otherwise, just as, you know, ones that do know, would be saying, you know, how Katie kind of referenced, like, oh, you know, this is a non-smoking area. Or, you know, if it got to the extent of where it's somebody repetitively doing it, you know, maybe it's Eric saying, I'm gonna ask you to remove yourself from this property right now, you know? But that's been very effective in the past, so that is what we recommend. Austin Dickman, this is Austin. He has, um, a little piece on that, and I'll pass her on the signage. Can I take that picture, too? So you can just see what the signs would look like and the verbiage that would, they're twelve-by-eighteen metal signs. Go ahead, Austin.
Most outdoor facilities are self-enforcing, which means they depend upon the cooperation of the public generally, those who frequent the area. Since most people were afraid from smoking if, you know, a tobacco-free policy is in place, the best way to enhance enforcement is to educate the public and, and local business about the policy early and often in the implementation process.
Thank you. Uh, and then we just have a little, it's called defeating the politeness. There's really that mythbuster of this is reality, and this is what some, um, assume or think. So the guys will read that. This is Hunter Pop as well, so.
All right, myth number one. Kids seeing adults using tobacco products decide tobacco use is no big deal.
Reality, thousands of teenagers start smoking every day, in part because they see their adult role models use tobacco or allow its use in public areas. How do children learn to walk, to talk, to play sports from adults? Adult habits do affect our children and youth.
Cir-, myth number two. Cigarette butts dis- discarded on the ground do not really hurt anything.
Reality, cigarette butts are not biodegradable, meaning they do not decay and cannot be absorbed by the environment. In fact, cigarette butts remain intact for about ten years before breaking apart, which amounts to tons of litter. Also, toddlers and pets may ingest the butts that are discarded on the ground.
Myth, myth number three. Policies that prohibit tobacco use at youth recreational facilities are during youth recreational events with restrict tobacco users from these facilities and events.
Tobacco-free policies for youth recreational facilities and events do not restrict people from using these facilities or attending these events. Rather, they only ensure that tobacco users refrain from using tobacco for a short period of time while at facilities where children and youth are playing.
Myth number four. Recreation-based tobacco-free policies are needed, regulate, regulations, and governmental inference, inter-inferences.
Reality, tobacco-free policies are public park policies similar to those banning alcohol or littering in public park and recreational facilities. It is the duty of policymakers to enact policies to, that protect the health and well-being of the citizens of their community.
Myth number five. Tobacco-free policies for recreational facilities will be impossible to enforce.
Reality, eighty percent of all Minnesota adults do not smoke. Therefore, tobacco-free policies are largely self-enforcing and cannot be properly enforced with a combination of adequate signage and community education about the policy. Any infraction can be reported and handled in the same manner as an alcohol or a little complaint that may occur as the, at these facilities.
Thanks, guys. Um, so with that being true, um, there's attached six different examples of nearby communities that have put policies into place so that you could have a template to choose from. Variations. Raynard's, for instance, was just a picture of a sign, and they passed the policy. Um, others were a little more extensive and more detailed. But we do have, through this grant as well, access to the Public Health Law, um, Center, and they would provide, like, if you had drafted a policy and you wanted review to get feedback, that's something that we can do through the grant and get, um, no cost to you as well. Um, and they would provide recommendations, make sure it's all up to par. Um, so we would provide that. Um, again, the signage would be provided. And then there's just, you know, another sample tips of kind of a little checkoff list in the very back that, um, if decided to move forward, to make sure all the bases are covered and some considerations to look at. With that, are there any questions that you have for any of us?
No, thank you, Nancy. Very nice job, good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the time tonight, your time and attention, so, very good.
Thank you.
Commit me the extra sierra news. Would you all do it? I'll take that.
Thanks, kids.
Thank you.
Good job.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the rule of our liability coverage against city liability. Hannah Hepburn and Hannah, sorry, Nicole.
It's okay.
Have been in contact with Holly, and had to include that Holly would recommend any types of changes this year for...
Nope, I was kind of actually showing you what we all did last year.
Okay.
I kinda just went through all of that, and, um, actually, I have a meeting with him tomorrow, depending on, I mean, if we approve it, we can move forward, but...
Well, I looked through it before and touched base with Eric. He had it listed as equivalent of four full-time officers.
Okay.
And I don't know. I know, uh, LoShider's full-time and he is, and then we have, uh...
Two part-time.
Two part-time, so we might be able to put that down to three.
Okay, yes.
If it's any savings, I don't know, but I mean, it was, it's only put LoShider on full-time and some of the others.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that would change our actual...
Yeah.
It might change our liability cost. It may could change our cost.
Just check with their, what are they listed?
Yeah.
Research that a little bit.
I don't know, do that, thank you.
Other than that, it looked...
Yeah, I didn't see anything similar to it.
No, I looked at the same ones. Yeah, we put the same thing that basically do every year or so. Need a motion to approve the renewal. I'll make a motion that we improve the renewal of the liability coverage for the city employees.
Second, huh?
Motion on the floor by Mike and seconded by Mary. All those in favor, please seconded by this lady. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously? Nicole, I just a couple of reminders for everybody, uh, for Mike and I, we have our board meeting Monday night.
Donnie's gonna step in for me, 'cause we'll be on next Monday.
And the park board will be, uh, meeting will be here at six P.M. I did check with Daniel, so...
Uh, we have our city council workshop Tuesday, uh, that starts at six, uh, December sixth. And the truth in taxation public hearing is set for Monday, the twelfth, at six-thirty T.M.
Who would it show up?
I know the box.
It agrees to taxes.
Twenty-nine.
It's at forty-five.
Public hearing is at forty-five, I'm saying.
And I also wanted to, um, I was talking with you about Tuesday, and I was talking about you on the twenty-seventh of December instead of Monday, the twenty-sixth. 'Cause the city hall will be closed.
We will be closed on the Friday and the Monday of, of Christmas.
Our policy for the employees, today after Christmas Eve is holiday and Christmas Day, so...
Yeah, my suggestion is we have a council meeting Monday night, is we just push that council meeting back to Tuesday night, if that works for everybody. Okay, yeah. Same time, seven o'clock.
I don't wanna have a council meeting the day after Christmas. I don't have a headache yet.
Let's get a motion on that, so we can get it prepared.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Don?
Second.
Second by Mary. All those in favor, please seconded by this lady. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously? We have some department reports.
We have a guest here. Does, do you have something to check?
Uh, nothing, nothing from the meeting, just, uh, maybe after.
Okay.
Awesome, you got a minute.
You bet.
Yeah.
Uh, we have, uh, police chief Eric. I know he's not feeling a little under the weather. Nicole?
All right, so we've got too much to update on. We are, I'm working on the sign locations and application for those, um, MINDOC signs for that tourism grant that we had through the college meeting with Royalton. Um, I did send out a letter for the hours for your committees. Thanks, Linda, for that. Um, the last date to get the slogans in will be Thursday, December first.
Later?
Yes, and...
How, how, how many are we getting, excuse me, for the...
How, what did I say, like, thirty or forty?
Thirty or forty.
Oh, really? And I'm gonna put in one, 'cause there, there's no restriction, is there?
Yeah, now you gotta be eighteen.
You gotta be eighteen?
We'll, we'll take it from eight-year-olds.
And other than that, I would just maybe like to speak with you, and you to set up, um, an electric committee, maybe? We're looking at, um, maybe implementing some new meters.
That's a good idea.
Working on that, so we're not taking up city staff for a whole week and...
Yeah.
Day and hours, and we're gonna, gonna eliminate maybe some human error by manually entering it all, but it takes pretty much a half a day.
Can we give Minnesota, we wanna give Minnesota power here with that meeting.
Yep, yep. Um, I know I was talking with you, maybe December twentieth? What day is that?
Yeah, I'm gonna be here on that whole day, so I don't know if that works for you, Donnie. It's a Tuesday.
It'll be fine.
Okay, and I can check with, um, Minnesota Power just to make sure, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure Kerry's here, too, so...
Yeah, that'd be great. We did have a meeting, uh, a month ago, or better, and he brought some preliminary numbers, and we asked him to draw up a proposal.
Did we ever get that proposal?
Yeah, Nicole's got a copy.
Yep, and it was kind of, um, there's a lot of jargon, yeah, so I, I called him and I talked to him on Wednesday for about an hour, and he kind of explained a little bit and went through it a little bit with me, and I asked him if we set up a meeting, if he could attend, but he's, was having a baby. She was like a week late or something, so he asked if we could push it out till...
Oh, hurry up.
Yeah, preliminary is looking very...
Just so the public kind of knows what we're talking about.
Right, it would be electronic meters. The meters would be changed. Uh, Minnesota Power would do it. They're doing it in a community right now.
And they would pretty much own them and we would rent them.
We rent them, and it's like four dollars, four fifty a month, depending on how much, they would, would have the capability of compute. Instead of sending Bobby to do electric cutoffs?
In the middle of the snow, winter.
They could do it over a computer. Boom.
And they sent, and they would send us a spreadsheet, and instead of, we have the opportunity to manually enter it in or have it just uploaded straight to Banyan. So we wouldn't have to enter, sit there for, it saves a lot of time.
Oh, something, Nicole, you had mentioned, takes the human air factor out of reading the meters, and not to mention, and we get pouring rain and, and three feet of snow on the ground, and these guys are trying to tromp behind houses and stuff like that. I mean, it's miserable. It is.
It'll, it'll, a lot of it switched to on-demand.
Yes.
Yeah, we will, on-demand.
So the, so the bigger, the bigger users, if they're, if they have a spike compete period...
You look at the time.
You can be doing that.
I, I think it's definitely worth looking, further looking into.
Well, the technology is coming here now, and it's just, I mean, the, I look at the savings in the office here and for Bob while we're reading them. I mean, it's two days for him with him and, uh, Freddie running around.
There's an option to, instead of having Bob go out there and physically take the meter off to disconnect it, we just literally call and push a button.
Yeah.
And it's off, and there's no, wow, it's kind of a safety factor for him, too, and...
Probably jerking the meter, too.
Mm-hmm.
So, no, I think, I think it's definitely worth looking into further, and, yeah, good, I'm glad you guys are, are on that. If we're here on day, if you wanna sit in on that meeting, you're sure welcome to that day.
Just let me know what time.
Uh, does it during the day work for you or evening?
Okay.
Day works better.
Perfect.
Really, going to be better.
Okay.
'Cause, uh, with Donnie leaving the council, we're gonna have to have a new electric.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Position to, to get, uh, get pilot calls if you are listed in on that as well.
Give everybody. Anybody else have anything? If not, give me a motion to approve.
I'll go to Drew me.
I'll second that.
By Mary and seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please second by by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
Everybody, I'll bet everyone says I go.